Perfectly timed, sorry.
Of the United States of America and this is the Republic for which this stands. One nation, indivisible, with one and equal justice.
Thank you, good evenings. For the month of May, twenty twenty four, we have the town of Police Department Officers documented one thousand fifty-two entries in the Police Department Call and Reporting System. During the reporting period, the officers issued two traffic citations, since they were making one million over eighty-five charges, they arrested fourteen individuals. Additionally, for the month of May, the department members conducted four motor car details at the police station. Resulting in nine hundred eighty-six commercial motor vehicles being made, six which were bound to be towed away. During the details, the officers performed sixteen inspections, they were required six vehicles and one driver to be placed out of service. During any one of these details, the officers were assisted by members of the Metropolitan State Police, Westwayland Township Police Department and the Easttown Township Police Department. Year to date, the officers have documented five thousand one hundred forty-seven entries in our call recording system, arrested seventy-seven individuals. They've received four hundred ninety-three traffic citations, two hundred twenty-two grid channels, investigated one hundred forty-eight motor vehicle fractures, four thousand one hundred eighty-five motor vehicles. And additionally, for the month of May, they were voted on community access restrictions.
Thank you. We want to address the report. Um, ready, hang three of them on it. Blacked in just over fifty-one percent of our budgeted direct revenues. Then just under forty-five percent of our budgeted expenditures.
Thank you. Uh, for the month of May, the daily average flow to the Dara Treatment Plant was approximately one million six hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and twelve gallons per day. Uh, there were no new sewer connections to either the Dara or Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Service areas. The township received two point two three inches of rain in the month of May. Uh, normal for May would be around four point four inches. Uh, current year to date, we're at twenty point five five, which is about two point two five inches above average for twenty twenty-four. The Public Works Department responded to two hundred P A one calls for the month of May. Um, I wanted to provide a quick update on the uh upgrades to the Eagleview uh wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the small treatment plant is currently under repairs. Um, everything seems to be going smoothly, Blooming Glen has started the actual repairs of the sludge holding tank. Um, we did bring additional tanks in and those are operating well with additional pumps. Uh, we anticipate the repairs at the Eagleby Wastewater Treatment Plant to be completed around early September twenty twenty-fourth. Uh, Peck Road continues to be closed due to ongoing construction related to the culvert replacement there. Uh, we did run into an issue with a water line that Aqua um had marked out, so we're working with them. We anticipate them on site in the first week of July. Um, and that process of moving that line should be two to three weeks, uh, weather permitting. Um, we're hoping to have that project completed by early or by the end of the summer. Um, and we will post additional updates to that by um via our website and social media if there is a change in that timeline. Uh, the beach and Maple Street sewer and and sewer and water pipe infrastructure is about eighty-five percent complete at this time. Uh, milling and paving are the only items that remain to be completed. Um, and final finally, the department completed all necessary inspections to touch vehicles as well as regular maintenance.
Yes. What's that? We got a lot, huh? All right, for the building department, for the month of May, the department issued ninety-nine permits for construction activities. Uh, total of one hundred forty-five inspections were conducted, ten fire inspections were completed, fifty-two used lab C certificates were issued. And the fire marshal responded to sixteen incidents as well as one vertigo. Now, we're in the fire department. The fire department, uh, they had sixty-seven incidents in the month of May. Of those thirty-eight in Euclid, five in Upper Euclid, six in West Plaquemine, and eighteen in other townships, leaving total responses for the year at two hundred and seventy-eight.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from New Orleans? Section or agendas, maybe. You're watching, please.
Thank you, um. It's definitely with mixed emotions this evening to announce that I've submitted my resignation to the Board of Supervisors, um, effective June thirtieth. Um, I'm doing this because I've accepted a new role with the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, so. Um, I did want to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Supervisors. Um, honestly, this has been just a life-changing opportunity for me. Um, and it's been great working with the board, and I just wanted to say how much I truly appreciated both your trust in me and your confidence in me as. We navigated issues throughout the last six plus years. Um, I knew coming here that there were big shoes to fill. Uh, you know, Doug, Doug Hanley was a force and I'm happy to have had the opportunity to have him as a mentor and now as a friend, so. I feel like we've been able to accomplish a lot over the last six plus years. Um, and none of that would have been possible without the help of this incredible staff that we have here. I truly believe that the employees here at Euclid Township are one of the township's greatest assets, they're incredibly dedicated. Um, and while this was an incredibly hard decision to make for me personally, I know that I'm leaving the township in. Amazing hands that will make sure that as we transition to through to the next um township manager, um, that the staff will make sure that it's a seamless transition. I also wanted to quickly thank the community of Euclid Township. Um, it's been an honor to be your township manager for the last several years. Um, and I just also wanted to thank all of the community groups, the advisory committees, um, everybody that, you know, welcome to with open arms here, and it's just. You know, it's a bittersweet ending, but at the same time, I will always wish the best for you in township, so. Thank you very much again for um this just amazing opportunity, and I know that you're in good hands as we move forward.
We are very happy. We have a whole bit of nostalgia to see. Or staff, the board for sure, spread your power. Great.
You know, that's lived without stories, Marcus.
Thank you.
I will miss telling you how much rain has fallen each month.
So move along, uh, number two, three equipment resources consultant.
Yes, so obviously now that the first item has been announced, um, what we would like to do this evening is Roseanne McGrath is our current human resources consultant. Uh, we have tapped her for the search to replace me or to replace the township manager role. Um, I've known Roseanne for quite some time, and she's done an amazing job helping us with some of the policies that we have passed recently. Um, I did want to just to note that because of the search through, she has proposed a rate increase to her existing, um. Right, so to keep us consistent with our other clients, and I think that that is totally acceptable, it would be a twenty-five dollar increase per hour, but. Um, these manager searches come with a great deal of additional fun, so. Um, but I can't think of a better person to lead the township through this process and um. So, yeah.
Do you have a question? As Mr. Green has said, we have some absolutely confusing sad numbers that are all set up to play these fast tests during the time that we are searching for our next. Move stop. You know, the process. But it's very. I'll make a motion to avoid terror near our office, we have been going through some of them. Oh, well, I was really, really good, definitely, um, terror and all of the tasks. I hope I'm certainly able to second the statue. People's going, we need it all. I appreciate Mr. Your honest, not just willingness, but enthusiasm to to fill this gap for us when we continue our search. And so obviously, a little bit confidence turns. Very helpful, my day-to-day basis, this very seamless transition. Any?
Thank you, um, I'm excited, a little nervous. Definitely have some big shoes to fill, but I appreciate your confidence in me and looking forward to it, thank you.
All right, we move on to my report.
Uh, yes, as you're aware, um, Eagleby Market at Town Center is currently under review, um. They're still in the process of updating their plans for compliance and are anticipating being on the July ninth meeting for. Um, discussion for approval, um, the ninety-day time clock ran out before the July ninth meeting, so that's what the extension is for.
Okay, this is some of the fun sewer stuff you'll get to talk involved with. Um, uh, Emma is our current operator of the Eagleby Wastewater Treatment Plant, we have had a great history with them. Um, we have received a proposal to amend the contract to increase rates for two uh two personnel particularly. Um, first, for the senior maintenance technicians, they have requested a uh increase from seventy dollars an hour to eighty dollars per hour. And for their maintenance technicians, they have requested a increase of um an hourly rate from fifty-five to sixty-five dollars per hour. Um, the information that was provided to us is that this will help with them assisting with some of the ongoing issues that we do have at the Eagleby Wastewater Treatment Plant. Um, while we're working to get it, the sludge holding tank repaired. Um, proper running of the facility is extremely important, so having reviewed this with our sewer personnel in the Public Works Department, we're comfortable with this increase, and I think that it would be for the best. Uh, for the maintenance of the plant moving forward. Right, so the township was contacted by Dara. Um, they have passed recently a new list of local discharge limits for their sewer system that we have to incorporate as part of our local limits. Um, the ordinance itself is actually an attachment to the sewer ordinance of our township code. So the what the board has before them is the um ordinance that would change that attachment with these new standards. So we'll have that posted, and that would be for consideration in our next board meeting.
We didn't have friends. Were a little bit shady. So, at part. And wait, we're thirteen two days where there's an election and township passes bid, uh, the representative to the election boards, if they can put it on the. Now, nor being able to submit to the election board, this board has to have an ordinance base that authorizes the repelling. The election board, so that. Were. That and board, the referendum. Um, and it's not that it goes to the parage of, it's quite a beautiful fairly position of increase. In the air, in fact, they rate now to a CD one quarter of one percent of the town of Euclid, uh, which. One, one quarter of one percent by the people who use to purchase interest in real property to purchase, you know, bank deposits and work back in Jesus. To the enemy. So, kind of that that is for firing those days, any offenders upon or persons related to the acquisition. Planning for acquisition, preservation, improvement, maintenance of local space, or local space benefits were said in a. I guess we were planning in a simple way, without questions asked, the voters, you whether whether it's capital, whether it's additional, or they don't tax it rated one quarter. Of all sense, we use my as a cash, lower the space representation. All of that, well, that, a lot of that, before we move, um, for comment, uh, well, for motions. And then public comment, vote, there are a number of civics, um. Forty-six one, voting ordinance, which is almost pointing to your back, zero four. Uh, forty-six two has been noticed appearing, then what was. That's the the Daler local. Forty-three, the two publication of that notice, uh, which ran on May twenty-first, May twenty-eighth, and June third. And then forty-six four. Certification posting of the notice of this public here. Um, so that, um, we're so finally, we can most of it. To approve ordinance number twenty-four then.
Open motion to approve ordinance twenty-one four thousand four. Three orders, I have another question, would you please?
This has been covered in the fire meetings.
Would you please, I'm sorry, would you please state your name, the record?
Name's La Martel. Um, is this a, uh, the tax increase? One year or on now? It's on about, it'll be put into place, uh, and and an increase of the earned income tax, um, that'll go year to year until. Less than until Kansas will buy a board, and I believe that you have. Minimum on here, I believe it's five.
How will we support him, uh, the purchase of open space and the maintenance previously?
There, there has been, we did, so there's currently, um, obviously, there was first, the Ross, um, that recently occurred, now some of these funds could be used to. Give that that service that was done by bond machines, uh, but there was no, um, there was no program in case to allow the township to establish program. Um, what is actually the proposed standard program to vote evaluating, so.
President, I just want to thank the board for getting over this, a lot of discussion in the last. Few years about what's happened, hasn't that passed, but I think it's time for that all, I just support this.
David Dahl, value, can you give us some background on nineteen hundred fifty years, what it was said, is that a maximum or? Right, so I mean, this ordinance is is a maximum of one quarter of one percent, I think our finance record ran the number double without the last week in three. Probably, I think it was just an analysis of what the environment went out, the rate over time, obviously. Uh, understanding there's still a tough time here, and I think that the question from wrong, so I think. You thought order, one of our hopes coming about two, but nobody here just.
Michael Taylor, Big Side Drive, uh, his follow-up question is, will this money that we presumably raised by the increase of the earned income tax be put to a separate account? Would we go to general bonds, is there any guarantee that the townships will not be able to use that for other purposes? I e, we all think of the gas tax that we've told on ten years ago, that's written wrong. No, it's used the money elsewhere, there's something, there's that someone being satisfied with word that we're just, this is just straight tax on this, also. With, is there a planning plan using this money to now offset all the care and fields and things that we have there? So it really is just a tax increase, that's coming for that, just to document, is there any sort of oversight or. Uh, ordinance related language that will control how to want to be, so the the first question, these are on the ship. One question, yeah, is it stopping these roles, I don't know exactly, I mean, this. I I assume it will be a segregated town, it's got, kind of like, it's your heart, but it has. Rep, right, um, second question. The second question is. I guess, you know, why are we being there now?
That's ten, oh, that's been certain, you know, you know, this certain views that I mean, that are, I can tell you, I don't. Think it's the the intent to just use the money for existing fields, I think, uh, whether it's, I know, where it's. Rossi may have some fields in the future maybe use to help with that, but I think that'd be a great program.
We have. As you mentioned, probably maybe interdivide. Uh, there might be other problems that we have, but what we want to have, you know, with Rossi, we have been, uh, we've been, well, let's say, but we can available. You can decide to figure out, really, really, completely, they had that, you know, that's the thing we won't, depending on. Previous existing parts, uh, like, I know, I'm making this for my spiritual, you definitely do some of that over to, for that scene, part of every, that's huge, a proof. Uh, that's not something lying, you know, the, not to just be based on what we're doing. To improve, I understand, right?
Jim Bay, value, I was just wondering, or one percent, is that, how do you come up with that, is that something in the township's guidelines, or how is that. Percentage of one percent established, or is that something that you guys selected, or is that historically in the tax base?
No, I think that's, um, that relates a little bit to to the earlier question, which is just trying to figure out what was a, what was a reasonable number. Generator, not one that can give a lot of program, that obviously unnecessarily taking more votes, I think that's necessary to think. Um, based on this one quarter percent that we probably could have been briefly about here, which would be a very, very efficient.
At least, who knows, one would be in place for five years, etc.
No, I, I figure it could be in place. And with, it could be in place just going forward, I, I do believe though that. Once you enact it, I believe it will shut down through the massive sense of. Okay, just make it with your different.
The property that you said you're into purchasing, uh, the way that those properties can be listed as well. Is for both.
Well, at this point, there, there aren't the, the only sign we knew about.
Well, they're covering. Uh, but in the conference, the. The conference is playing well, let's advertise the list, uh, either be that expressed. These towns are so interesting, if they ever come on. A market, um, is that meaning that that's only. How am I, where, where would it be in the single legal two years now? It's even over the last.
Appreciate that question, how does the township ensure that the funds that are earmarked? For this purpose are going to be paid fair or market value?
Uh, well, that would be when, when, when it comes to the actual purchase problem, um. First of all, the, the township is prohibited by law from, uh, spending more than the creative value of the. Uh so the old set get appraisal. And that appraisal has to be at or less than that amount, um, it's, you know, it's actually interesting, this is part of my thing. The whole program, that's part of once they, once we put the program in place, some of the, the town. We look back to where we're. There are none of them. Program, one in particular that comes to mind actually has a, it's a granular providing product, yeah. They're just about the current basis. Oh, okay, which is actually a cheaper alternative, uh has its pros and. Uh and they actually have a scoring, so they have a scoring method, and based on that scoring, they say, okay, and we have appraisal. Basically appraisal and scoring method, we're willing to pay its amount. Of the, the appraised value, so there's a lot to read into it, but. The answer to your ultimate question, which is, it's, it's prohibited by law to pay more for property.
And the last question is, when we board or instead of territories of power. What input do we residents have about, uh, it's also an abuse, it's existing use in a political. To ensure that it's in line with what. Joining residents, yeah, they'd be interested in, um, what the, the townships intend that property, how does all that? In this way, that lower forecast, how does the township ensure giving what projects? The residents so they can touch it.
Yeah, and again, I mean, a couple, couple of statements, one is that, um, hopefully any. She didn't buy, and I don't know if we were here for any meetings that dealt with the worst, if anything, actually. By the port action first, probably, you know, the politics, kind of, well, the meeting. There'll be opportunity for, so follow comment, the other piece of that is making. How it's delicious. How it's down to goes about setting up programs, there's any probably can go into that as well. Uh, there could be committees set up, there could be a space committee, there's, there's any number of options. That could have a process, but I think in the current lease. Uh as, you know, sort of a stock gap threshold, any, any actual purchasing, property purchasing, you've been saying about that.
Thank you.
She passes. I can go then move on to the announcements of this evening, all eight of you have announced everything otherwise to me. First off, we have your grand part, Wednesdays at nine thirty a.m. until four thirty. On June eleventh, we have our P P in here for P S. On June twenty, we have our executive commission meeting, Senator Japan, Sheriff Walker. June eighteen, we have. She knows, um, okay. So practice is all afternoon, she has a party at ten a.m. You want the, uh, so he's got. Uh, this is check, and so, but I think a little bit of the oversleep, right, from the township. It's related, we put that, it's the. Versus. On June nineteenth is our June tea holiday, the county. June twentieth, the environmental advisory council to chat meetings, so, yeah. June seventh, six, twenty, we need to discuss two of three down the drive for side of our variance. On July first, it was for residents, champion, you twelve p.m. July third, the landing mission will be at seven p.m. July fourth, it was a regular report, July holiday, town box closed, so on July fifth. Uh, why, for us, the foundation, seven.
Yeah, it's our day, so then one seventy prom road, a few months ago, I spoke to you about the flooding issue. Uh, proper and I wondered if any update of. Any direction depending with that, you know, issue law. And the second part of that question is, I knew you mentioned that some engineering. Drawn, I mean, in the first half this year, like, I'm still that correct, David, I just wanted to know. If that's in process or did we get your comments?
So we need to get on.
Well, I believe that that pipe was lined, um. For this meeting, I'll have to double check on that, um, and I know that we were having ongoing conversations about the flooding at that location and also. Just because of the way the storm water flows through Marchwood, can't just have one conversation, we have to start looking at all like the pinch points with that. Um, I know I had reached out to Dan Daly, the township engineer, to go through that. Uh, if he's not been in touch or no one's been in touch with you, I'll make sure to follow up with that.
Okay. How do we do that?
Um, it'd probably be easiest if you just email me your contact information.
And the harvest, can you?
It'll probably be tarished. Um. Before you leave, I'll make sure you get the contact information.
There seems to be a. General desire from the community. Of the township to purchase. Lionel station farm. I don't know, that's been out in the meetings, maybe private thing, but you know, uh, how do you do that? Can we do that? Let's see, it's a. One quarter of one percent. It can be a basis. Desperate. But you can do that, it's supposed to pass into the public, that's your name. I believe it.
You're asking us how, like, how just find a statement. And I'm just gonna lie about it. Um, it's only best question I can answer for you right now, this time. Uh, I think I can read, read or read a lot of conversations that, you know, all of us, including community members, the brother, the faithful, you know, and. School district members, whatnot, uh, that is. But this is a, it's been common with such. Since history, looked at as would be. Um. I have to tell you, as someone that had been in front of those hours, we think that. The solution that we're going to have is only going to work when everybody pops the table together and says yourselves. That is what works to this time. You guys come to our games, they're hoping for updates and intel and timeline. Um, and it's really hard for us to sit up here and. Be able to commit to a timeline or be able to commit to something, which is why I don't station, or any of these other. Such are common. Stations. It's saving time, which is a good thing because of this. Station two. So we don't want to rush that process with respect to the seller of the property, which happens to be another one of our public entities, the school board. Um, I think they're the best thing we can concentrate in those. Bringing our relationship, having those implications. Honoring and respecting their right as the seller to look at all of their options and just. Ever say that our team, the work that everything's on the table and everybody can meet in the middle and talk anything.
Thank you for saying that, um, as you know, they're listening at. I don't want to, there is one. But if there's a way, as you say, if everybody's able, if. I can help. And the community can help, you did their, our help. You know, all. There's a way to create a committee and start some planning or whatever, but you know. Better to do that, you know, the. If you're on offense, it's hell, if you're on offense, but if you need more to go on, that community aren't. Superior.
You guys are doing a great job of following along and showing up and sharing everything back, and everybody should be bad, uh, that we have these changes on the days. Repression too, but. I don't worry about it, or, I mean. You're sitting here, you can never make everybody out of. I appreciate the patience to make a weekend, I really do believe that. So, so these, the vague conversations that are still. I'm reading. Obviously, uh, I'm reading.
Thank you.
Are there any other?
Well, you, I was just wondering, kind of thought, and they said, if there's any precedent for, you know, property like this, where the township. Um, historically, we ever worked with any of the sellers to try to slide this on common ground. While this whole process is taking place, or is that? Not so very.
I think, uh, I think it's how it's. Which is going to be different, a lot of it. They exist, it must be school agency, I think, at least, I'm just, surely in terms of town things that. You know, there's gotta be a solution out there that, you know. Gives the, the, the property owner. What they're tied to is, is property owner, but doesn't, um, offend the community. Um, and I, and there's ongoing conversations, and that's what the town is really great.
Sure, and I think they've been a good point, you know, we. The last situation we had, you know, with the, the districts and township, and. Lionel station farming, when we really didn't get to work together, it's more of that necessarily. These were, they had a buyer, they didn't really suit, even township wanted, and so we were. Really stood up against that, and I guess what I was wondering is, is there? Ever an opportunity to bring those three groups together? To have those discussions, so we find something suitable for everyone.
Uh, I, that, I don't know the answer to that question, but what I will say is the fact that you guys are out there really, you know, effective. Uh, and, and I think whether you're in a meeting or not, the fact that everyone will be there, it's important. Uh, it's, it helps. Um, it helps the township provide its message, um, that there has to be some new solution that works for everybody. Um, I don't know that answers your question, so it's. I agree.
So, I just want to thank you all for responding to my email and questioning, and I would. Sort of emphasizing the word that the community here, our only goal is willing to save our area. I mean, we're not the enemies here, we want to work with supervisors and the data from school board. But all of us don't have a lot of experience in this field, and we're listening to guidance from the earth. And then the, and the school board are working together, but all of us, uh, want you to feel like we are part. Of your community, that we want to help, I, I just want to prevent. My station farm from becoming the arm of just now. Because of what's happening now on Haggard Days Farm, I don't want it to be like what's happening at the Conver Barry Bridge and other areas. That I write about, I've lived in equal township, almost finally. We're all must wait in township, and we just want to see it staying. You know, re- revive, yeah, or, right, so I did want to thank you and, uh, continue to work with us. Don't see us as the. That commander.
Well, uh, I think it was quite an intention, I just had a question about. So this is a little bit of history, it is my understanding that after the school board bought Lionel station farm. Um, they couldn't build a school there because it wasn't zoned, that's. And that zoning didn't change, so that it was a school. And then I believe. Hackett or another developer wanted to do something, but again, require a zoning change. Is there a reason that, that this, and I don't believe that three of you are on the floor this time, those things came up, but is there a reason, is there a reason not to prove? Of a, a residential zoning instead of like industrial, to think it was. To that property, and could that be done prior to a new offer coming in, which wouldn't necessarily be a school for it? But I guess it's a process question, it's a history question, like, why wasn't it? And the zoning's had changed back when the school board asked, we have a school there, and we would be having these discussions, might be on half of the seasons, but not. Just references, that's my, that's my.
Yeah, and it's, 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 it was, right.
I think you're. Understand the history of similar environment and street, I really have much more than that. Uh, as far as, um, the issue of, you know, is, is the more open and visible? Open to the zoning change, I think every. I think the idea of, of changing zoning, you know, there, there's all the. It's a lot, um. There's a lot of copyists saying any particular option is what I, you're gonna have to look at. You know, all the pros, all the cons, whether it works, whether it doesn't work, so I don't, it's a little hard to say in a vacuum that this will work. But there is definitely, um, an openness, maybe looking at all the options that will. Will get a solution that works a little, your, your question about changing the zoning now. Uh, you know, I will tell you the difficulty and, uh. And, and there's actually, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of, um. Under both the municipal plan code and, and other common all things, but there's all sorts of. Principles about, you know, changing zoning in certain situations, you know, you can do it in other situations, uh. In, in this situation, at least if we would go to normal, we would just closing, anyone's chain. Uh, because it deals with, with subdivision and land development, it wouldn't take a factor. Until the actual ordinance went, so that give. The applicant is what's going to say, cause of all that time, to be able to get a, they're not investing in them. Under the current ordinance, so it, it might actually be counterproductive to just at this point, throw out an ordinance. Uh, because it would just actually force their hand in putting in something that. It's, yeah, it certainly doesn't want, and frankly, schools. if you're, it certainly doesn't want to be frank with schools.
Just, I'm still trying to word the term, yeah, yeah, I mean, the real estate attorney. But I know the comments made, that's a little disingenuous at the, at the roundtables that the school board meeting, uh, by the real estate attorney, who I respected, known years, but that, that the proposed development of warehousing does not require zoning change. Now, that's true, the term art does require zoning. But to go from what I understand is twenty-two thousand square feet to two million square feet does require either a big, or a easy, or some. Like a lot of the mightiest consequences. And, like, does it require zoning change as far as, well, not, if you want.
I, I agree with your assessment. True statements say not requiring zoning change, but there are many many approvals that are required, um, that are, so I, there's a difference between, and this is, and again, I might be getting too into weeds, but, um, there is a difference between saying something to permit a juice, and then something by right, by right means you can come in, you can slap it in, you can go in. This is not a, a, this is not by right, this is a finish, so where it has to be a permit, there's a lot of steps that they have to build it really before they buy. And they come back to this. Hundred percent, yeah, and, and, and we just, we, you know, and we're just over here in Florida, but certainly this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Chad, see, but fires are, um, it's same on, on the zoning changes in the school board. And we, the doctor, uh, or their history that, uh, Carvana was going to steal the Carvana. Who basically was going to pave two hundred acres and put in twenty thousand making use cars there, uh. The warehouse thing, they felt through fortunately, but both those uses were severe detriments to the community. And so the school board said, well, we want high school, but, oh, that wasn't allowed. Or, Hackett wanted to build a, develop, wow, can't have that. So it's sort of amusing because most zoning requests, or ordinance requests are to build something worse than what's allowed. Something less, put their economy garage right next to the property line or something. Or they go, well, maybe build a three-story building instead of two-story building. Here, the zoning change or ordinance change is to do something better to, for the community, not worse, so it's sort of, uh, it's, it's kind of, um. This is kind of amusing because uses that are going to destroy the area are okay, but, oh, can't get houses, or you can't have, you know, swing park, if that's not zone. So, just wanted to point that out, that maybe, maybe we can you know, ordinance or zoning issues changes, it will make it better, you know. That makes sense?
Yeah.
So, so I appreciate your thoughts, I agree with you, I mean, previous. It was, it was quite basic. Little bit possible right there, we're familiar with you, I don't know that, so one thing, a little bit of the history, I think that was. One of the things I, uh, that my understanding, I haven't talked, we didn't, while we were first made, um, it's Adam and I, it's, first team one is supervisor, we're talking the one of the three previous work members, I mean, were eight or higher, he had, I mean, well, part of the. And first one, it's one of the, so it wasn't sunshine, it's such a long. Uh, but, uh, one of the reasons they happened was for a really important reason, when the Hackett plan or some of the residential plans there, that um, some obvious sewer problem, uh, there's just, for a critical capacity for sewer in that. So one of the reasons was, and there's other issues. Problems that, so one of the reasons they really resisted, um, you changing, it wasn't just from trade, they, they did think that there was some, you know, problem building. Plan that Hackett had proposed and had issued out, we were just, you know, how, and I'm not, you know, how. Yeah, from that, to live in, also, like, when, um, you know, you made a comment that, you know, but it's time, I'm trying to go outside, everyone's staying in the person. It means because if I, for certain things has really got a willingness to come to, uh, potential, for instance, every restaurant, first one coming in. There's always a way to buy, I don't just matter, just because of the tactics of this uh, passive initiatives, and that's a way to kind of, you know. Impose some, some expression on, on, I mean, it's not because uh, restaurants are bad, you know, they're, they're, no, anything, you know, it's, even this. So we have, some of us have, and that was just, and that was, um, you see that our size, limit, we're coming in, and this is a little uh, you do, what do you think that was, pretty exact, um, is really that, so we see a lot of initial abuse hearings that will probably not happen, you know, that doesn't necessarily, you know, we, we're getting it better, we're, it's just historically that, than the thousand point one issue over the particulars of the, of the, of the play, it's all the way, they, they track some, you know, the big developments, like, you know, for sure. You'll track over space, but are, so there's a lot of this here. Uh, there's this, why, we're here for, there was a.
Well, I just, uh, uh, with sewage farm, I understand that the, the part, some of the, um, I remember you know, these massive industrial belts, the valves hundreds of acres of, of, we've got raised, so that's pretty. Which stuff. Actually, that's a good question, is where, where are these, that's a lot of, happened. And like, where would that discharge go to, who's there to pay for it to be there? You know, it's not just, or the question.
I'll check that, sure, um, so you mentioned the, um, the zoning and the uses associated with that zoning. How will the township ensure that there's a change in the way which that property is used, if it was a, how will the township ensure that uh, the neighbors are not in that?
So a land development, it should, it should, it's been, uh, all our resources. Uh, that's a whole process, that's something that there's any unique situation you're running there. So this is all following up. There would be, we need to lead in, but they were talking about the area of development large scale, uh, slightly longer process, a lot of meetings, there's permission to use, there's some parent, you want to be here, all processes.
And the township would have, or the community involvement to ensure that the impacts of the adjoining residents are.
Well, I mean, I think the township, the township, you need to be involved by these trigger sentences. I'd say you should, you should know where. Please God. So we want that, and people give us feedback, and I'll say some other things you don't get special. Uh, as part of the community, the state, the information's out there, we're considering each guideline that are raised, to be able to. Maybe accessible, uh, as far as any answers to that, or that, something that you should come and share with us at the appropriate time and process, so that we take into account. So that, so that applies for the variety of different regulations, that they might have, that's all right in the package, or the supervisors, or whoever, the body. So a hearing board, uh, to digest it.
Sure, that, uh, let's, let's fast forward a tick, let's assume that to a, to a use that at the time seemed suitable to all of the residents. And then the user of that property were to do something that basically impacted the neighboring area, how does the township ensure that those neighboring areas were, uh, the, uh, that this change in use was absolutely considered by the residents?
So, well, that, I mean, maybe, maybe, I mean, because you're, you're forgetting the land, you know, land, planning a lot, it's a whole, I mean, there's a lot that goes in, many times. I mean, there, there's a lot of layer, first there's just using what the right of doing, right, and then even if they're that dislocated. You know, it's, it's, or they're going all land development. Something, process, these are all part of projects, which can make a little bit.
Play it's my teachings.
Be bare, is your, your order, um, and then at that point, assuming you're able to get your approval and your building, stage, building room. And then if something comes up where you're not doing things, or with this, with the town with any approvals you receive, that's ordinances, then there's work with. Um, but being that by but, but to sort of get to the order of reflection, that's one of the reasons that can get a, I don't think anyone, first of all, everybody, I think that's why people like Scott, who did many years, who learned how to, to you know, fervent plan, you know. Super. And there's, there's a lot of those, and it's just the, you know, and that's why the process, and this board, you know, is always, you know, that they have to you know, struggle with the balance of assuring that the property owner has their rights and that they're not being, but that the surrounding community, uh, to their concerns are taken into account through as best a camp putting in proper, you know, zoning, we can, you know, if you go back to the, the whole purpose of zoning. You know, it's, it's simple form back when it came in the thirties and twenties and thirties was sort of like, like, used to look like, like, used to cry or make sure. You know, factories and then you factory house. You know, so, gee, maybe that's not the best idea, they have a bunch of kids playing, you know, around the back, back. That's. So, back to.
That, well, building, that's, um, what if all of the, at home were to do something without the benefit of a building, uh? What would happen in industries like that?
I don't go too far now, and down, down the hill into the period, so I don't think continues, I'm having a, it's a good conversation.
It's encouraging that they showed the different mills from east pipe to the west pipe, when you know the west mitts and ours is the lowest, which is always good. We also have almost twice the population, would we consider raising that quarter of the one percent? To decrease that over money, there's some of that open space.
So let me, so I, I will tell you to use some clean time. I understand the point, you're mixing apple and orange, a little bit, so a mill that the E I P and a mill are sort of two separate, one that's the mill is, is associated and, and supervising involvement, the mill associated with your, your real estate tax. Uh, your, your property ownership, your space plan, you can grow property as opposed to your E I T is on your income retirement. All right, that's it.
Thanks. You kind of really have this case, so. Anything I can do to, to, um, check, I admire it. I moved out here nine years ago, and there's no, you know, a lot of woods. Um, and, and every, every week, I know there are. That at the end of this race. My fear is I grew up in Delaware County, and, uh, I just feel like you're mentally sick, you're sick, and not here, worse than you buy. And we need to be more aware of what, you know, with highways and, you know. They've traveled in over a year, a lot of that's, I don't know what what it is. But I'll say, I just it's more than, it turned a lot of the money, because I'm not informed. What can I do? What can I then involve into, check? You, I mean.
I will have a great, uh, wanting to subscribe to our website, but let's see if I will get any questions from us. As far as like any agendas, there's hardly none.
Senate terms. Let's, you told me that the planning, yes, yes. That we're doing, but.
Are they, yeah.
Yeah. Start sending you all the time. Not learning what you should deal with, and find some stuff that they have, or not. Well, no, I'm certain there's probably a lot of people who are very dangerous.
Sorry, I hear, always, if someone, I know the same, what's going on?
They're hot, they're, they're. And the P H C was a hard, a lot of, you know. They're all, they're all hot views. So, okay. Just be, be, okay, please.